Welcome, everyone, to the July 28, 2025 meeting of the Delaware County Board of Commissioners. And I would like to ask Chief Moore, please, to lead us in the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Chief Moore. I'm Barb Lewis, President of the Board. Jeff Benton, Commissioner Jeff Benton is our Vice President. Fellow Commissioner Gary Merrill is here, our Administrator Tracy Davies, our Deputy Administrator Dawn Houston, our Deputy Administrator, General Counsel Eric Hostetler, and we have Brandy Wilson and Jennifer Wallraven as our clerks. We can begin.
Resolution number 25-542, in the matter of approving the electronic record of proceedings from regular meeting held July 21, 2025.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, vote.
Vote on motion 25-542. Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Mr. Benton?
Aye.
We do not have any public comment today. That brings us to item number three, resolution number 25-543, in the matter of approving purchase orders and announced certificates and payments of warrants in batch number CM APR 0724.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, vote.
Vote on motion 25-543. Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Resolution number 25-544, in the matter of canceling the Delaware County Commissioners sessions scheduled for Thursday, August 7, 2025, Thursday, August 21, 2025, and Monday, August 25, 2025.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, vote.
Vote on motion 25-544. Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Resolution number 25-545, in the matter of granting annexation petition from agent for the petitioner Molly Quinn, attorney at law requesting annexation of 1.443 acres of land in Orange Township to the city of Columbus.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, vote.
Vote on motion 25-545. Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Resolution number 25-546, in the matter of approving travel expense requests.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, vote.
Vote on motion 25-546. Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Resolution number 25-547, in the matter of appointing a member to the Tax Incentive Review Councils.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Good morning, Commissioners. Tracy Davies, Administrator. Two of the Tax Incentive Review Council appointees are no longer able to serve in their appointed roles, so we're recommending that I be appointed to serve one of those vacancies, and we're working on filling the other vacancy.
Okay. Further discussion? Vote, please.
Vote on motion 25-547. Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Resolution number 25-548, a resolution of necessity to levy a renewal of an existing tax with an increase in excess of the 10 million limitation for the purpose of establishment and operation of a 911 system.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Good morning, Commissioners. Justin Navi, Director of Finance. This request pertains to a recommendation which was adopted by the 911 Board for the placement of a renewal of the existing 911 levy with a marginal increase of .05 mils on the November ballot. And I have a short presentation I'll be showing this morning as to how we arrived at this recommendation.
Sure. Thank you.
Commissioners, just a brief overview of what I'll be presenting. I'm going to be giving an overview of the existing levy and cash flows, a summary of the capital improvement plan, and a final review of the levy options that we evaluated. So presently, we have a .68 mil levy that's operating for the 911 Department, and it was adopted by the voters in November of 2020. It's set to expire in the 2026 tax year, which is collected in the calendar year 2027. The current effective rate is about .40 mils, and it generates about $5.2 million annually. And the average cost to a homeowner is about $31.65 a year. This is just a summary again of the historical cash flows, along with the estimates for 2025 and 2026. And you can see it's maintaining a pretty sizable cash reserve year over year. The issue that we found when starting to work on this project primarily is driven by the capital improvement plan that we're looking at over the next five years. In this table, there's two large projects in particular. One is the replacement of the consoles for the 911 operating department, and also about a $10.8 million project to essentially replace the equipment on all the towers in the county. And again, here's a summary of some of the major improvements that we've identified. And again, the consoles and the GTR project for the tower replacements or the equipment replacements are the majority of the costs. So the first option that we looked at was just a straight renewal of the existing levy presented to the voters. We can technically do this through 2030 by entering a lease option, a capital lease option, for the consoles and the tower replacement projects. The issue that we found, we actually did a financial forecast into 2035, and what would happen is going into 2029, we'd probably have to go back to the ballot again for an increase. And again, based on the analysis we worked on, potentially the cash in the fund would go negative by 2031. So unfortunately, we didn't find that this option was viable right now. A second option that we looked at was, for all the capital costs were identified through 2030, if we weren't able to essentially lease the equipment over like a five to seven-year term, if we had to pay for all these costs all over the next five years, what would that look like? Under this option, again, we'd have to go to the voters for a renewal with a .16 mil increase. It would allow for us to pay for the entire capital plan of about $15.9 million through 2030. It would have a pretty sizable increase to homeowners or property owners in the county with an increase of $13.77 a year. The one thought behind this option was, if we do this increase and we pay for all these capital improvements over the next five years, when the levy comes up for renewal again, we would do a renewal with a decrease to remove this additional mileage. And then the last option, and this is the one that was adopted by the 911 Board for presentation this morning, is a smaller increase of .05 mils with the renewal to the voters. And with this option, we would have to do capital leases for some of the major improvements over the next five years. And it would generate about $620,000 annually. It would allow us to pay for the entire capital improvement plan, but essentially, we would have to extend this increase to the next renewal period, starting in 2030. And it would have a low-cost increase of about $4.30 a year to homeowners. And again, this is the option that we're recommending that was presented to the 911 Board that's presented this morning. Sorry. Some other options with this, it does maintain sufficient cash balances in the 911 operating fund. It's a low-cost option, and a similar increase was presented on the November 2020 ballot with a similar increase, and that passed with almost 59% approval by the electorate. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions. And Chief Moore with the City of Delaware, who's also on the 911 Board, is here this morning, if you have any questions.
Did Chief Moore want to make any comments?
Thank you, Justin. Welcome, Chief.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Adam Moore. I'm the Chief of Police for the City of Delaware, and I'm currently serving as the Chair of the 911 Board. When it comes to questions, if you have any questions about gigawatts and megahertz and all those types of things, don't ask me. I'm here to provide a little bit of color commentary to this request. And as I thought about this morning, a couple of things came to mind. One is, I have been employed by the City of Delaware for 23 years, and just in the last six months, I got the opportunity to go through our freshwater treatment plant. And you're going to ask me, what does that have to do with 911? Well, what it has to do is, I've been here for 23 years, and every day I get up and I turn the tap on, and the water comes out of the tap, and I didn't think twice about it. I now understand what goes in to making sure that water comes out every day, and we take that for granted. In my mind, the 911 system is kind of similar in the situation that it's a kind of hidden infrastructure, and we don't always take into consideration the complex process and systems that are necessary to make sure that when our residents are in need and they call 911, that that information travels down through all the channels to the proper people and back up. And we are very fortunate in this county to have a system that allows us to do that. Communication is just extremely, extremely important. We just had July 4 in the City of Delaware, had about 15,000 of my closest friends come to watch our fireworks. And interestingly enough, this box that we all carry, I'm sitting there, and maybe you've experienced this at a large venue, trying to send a text, and it won't go, and it won't go, and it's because I look out, and all 15,000 of those folks are on that same box. We don't have to worry about that with our system in Delaware County because we have a large, complex system that has redundancies and the equipment that's necessary. Unfortunately, to maintain that, much like all the other services we provide, we're going to have to do some major upgrades to it in the next several years, which Mr. Navi mentioned. Mr. Navi prevented his presentation at the 911 Board. We had some discussion there, understanding, much like all of our homes, bills are going up everywhere. Bills are going up for government to provide the services that it provides. We thought that option three was the best option. It's a marginal increase, allows us to finance those major improvements to the 911 system and continue to maintain that top-of-the-line service to our folks. Again, it's a system that I hope many of our residents will never need, but when you need it, you want it to work. And I appreciate your time today. The 911 Board did vote to support recommendation three at their June 30 meeting, and that's what I'm here to convey. So thank you for your time this morning.
Thank you. Commissioner Merrill?
Yes, I have privilege to serve on the Board for the 911, and I've been privileged to serve during my tenure as Commissioner, and a lot of foresight went into combining various agencies throughout the county to put us where we are today. My perspective is 911 is one of the best investments we can make in our county. And a lot of work was done, and well, how can we best do this with the smallest increase for our residents? And $4.32 average increases, if you take inflation into consideration, is awfully cheap. But the quality of the service is anything but cheap. It's kind of tagging on to what Chief Moore said, we take it for granted. That faces person who answers the 911 call, and I've had to use 911 in my home, who gets the necessary services on the road to your home quickly, and who will stay on the phone to make sure you're being taken care of during that wait time is, you can't put a price tag on that if it's your family member. And it's kind of like a very, very cheap insurance policy. And the quality of the people we have in 911 is exceptional, and I strongly support this recommendation today. And we all sleep better knowing that 911 is there when we need it. So with that, those are my observations and comments.
Commissioner Benton?
Yeah, I guess I would echo Commissioner Merrill's comments. This is a critical service. I mean, everyone, literally everyone knows 911. Many have used it, and it is an extremely vital service that we have to provide and want to provide. We've invested significantly in the staffing in recent years, you know, to retain the talent that we think provide the best service in our jurisdiction, as well as many others. I think we have one of the best in the state. But Director Yan Cannon, who couldn't be here this morning, is a great leader and doing a great job. But as Chief Moore said, we have to invest in the infrastructure, and that's the big part of the price tag on this. On this is that, you know, the equipment we have is nearing its end of life. We can't take a chance on it not functioning, so we have to replace it, and we need to, and I support this levy. But I guess I would still encourage the Board and Justin and others to look at alternatives to the Motorola equipment. The price has gone up significantly, and are there other alternatives that provide comparable equipment with a lower price? But anyway, thank you. And Justin, thank you for all your work on this, Chief Moore on 911 Board. Thank you for, again, leading this vital service and making sure it's doing well what it's supposed to do.
Thank you for your study and consideration on this, Justin, and also Chief Moore and Commissioner Merrill. We've got an excellent 911 Board. We have excellent leadership in our 911 department and staff. So I definitely support this very small increase. Any other comments? Vote, please.
Vote on motion 25-548. Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Thank you.
Resolution number 25-549, in the matter of approving a transfer of funds for Job and Family Services.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Good morning, Commissioners. Bob Anderson with Job and Family Services. This transfer is our standard quarterly transfer after we reconcile expenses in our state system.
Okay. Any comments? Vote, please.
Vote on motion 25-549. Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Resolution number 25-550, in the matter of approving the Second Amendment to the contract for the purchase of supervised visitation services between the Delaware County Board of Commissioners and Marion County Doing Business as Care Fit Center.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
And we are renewing our supervised visitation with Care Fit out of Marion. We do not utilize the service often, but it does allow an option for people on the north side of the county, or if it's a better fit to do supervised visits in that jurisdiction.
Vote, please.
Vote on motion 25-550. Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Resolution number 25-551, in the matter of approving the Child Placement Services Contract, First Amendment and Second Amendment between the Delaware County Board of Commissioners, the Delaware County Department of Job and Family Services, and child placement provider Kids Count 2.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
And this is a placement provider. We have not placed the youth at this provider for some time, but there is no increase in rates, and it does provide us an option as needed moving forward.
Vote, please.
Vote on motion 25-551. Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Resolution number 25-552, in the matter of approving a contract between the Delaware County Board of Commissioners, the Delaware County Department of Job and Family Services, and the Delaware County Transit Board for the purchase of transportation services.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
This is our new contract with DCT. We issued an RFP earlier this year. Our committee refuted and made the recommendation to continue contracting with them. This contract will, July 1 of this year through June 30 to 26.
Okay. Vote, please.
Vote on motion 25-552. Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Resolution number 25-553, in the matter of approving the Fifth Amendment to the contract between the Delaware County Department of Job and Family Services, the Delaware County Department of Board of Commissioners, and the Delaware County Transit Board for the purchase of transportation services.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
And this amendment, excuse me, is increasing the previous contract to cover all services. We have seen an increase in ridership in our medical and in other assessment-type transportation.
That's great. Vote, please.
Vote on motion 25-553. Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Thank you.
Before you leave.
Oh, yes. Come back.
I say it so clear, but I think I get the same idea.
Administrator, Deputy Administrator Houston, I believe there was a recent meeting you were telling us about earlier.
Sure. Dawn Houston, Deputy Administrator, and wanted to recognize Bob Anderson while he's here with us today for his recent award from National Pellra, the Public Employer Labor Relations Association. Bob attended a training that took place in Portland, Oregon in June, and he received the Paysetter Award at the national level. So just wanted to recognize him for his work and the award that he received from National and to be able to just say congratulations in person. We had announced it a few weeks ago during session, but Bob was not here at that time. So we thought we would keep him a little longer today so that we would be able to say congratulations.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Absolutely. Innovative leadership in public sector labor relations, among other wonderful things that you are doing, Bob, heading our department, oh my gosh, Jobs and Family Services. You have been a real light nationally, and of course, we're so happy to have you here. And other comments?
I have a couple, as I tried to bring you back about the same time you did. Don sent us a real nice summary about this award, and we're all very much aware of the quality of the job that you and your team performs in Job and Family Services. And I could read everything that Don sent, but you've been with us about six and a half years, and we do a lot of things, and we get a few things right. And I think this is one of the things we got right, did you agree? So Bob does an outstanding job, and we're very lucky to have him. Bob's belief is that working together as a team improves the overall outcome of a project, very much a team player. I'm just reading some excerpts from Don's comments. He supports employees by listening to their concerns, provides timely responses. When Bob began as the Delaware County JFS Director, he was, let's say, it's much improved. I'll just put it that way. I don't want to be negative. His relationship with JFS Union and non-union staff has been and continues to be very positive. And I could go on and on with the comments that Don made. I'm going to stop there, but I do have a couple of personal comments I'd like to add. There are some people, managers, directors, et cetera, you trust, and you know that when you speak, they speak honestly. And regardless of how it might affect their area, they tell it the way it is. And Bob, you're that person. We all have the highest respect for you. There's never a question of trust as it comes to you and your department. There is not an area, and this is a county commissioner, that I have more challenges in understanding what you guys do because of all the federal rules, et cetera, et cetera. But I know it's in good hands, and I know that you're going to do your homework, and you're going to give us the best options available. And you're recognized throughout the state for the quality of work you do. You're darn sure recognized in this county for the quality of work you do. And I just want to say, we're glad you're part of the team.
Thank you. Thank you.
Bob, did you know we were going to do this this week?
I did not.
Yeah. Well, I won't ramble on because, you know, Commissioner Merrill said, well, Don, others have recognized your contributions and leadership. I would like to just highlight the leadership. I mean, you're a great leader of a very, very important agency within the county. You know, we take care of a lot of kids who need help, a lot of seniors who need help, a lot of others. And, you know, you do a great job of that. It makes our jobs so much easier because we just, you know, we just can rely on you and count on you and your team to do a great job, and that's really, really important. So thank you. I'm glad we were able to surprise you just a little bit.
You too.
And congratulations, a national award. I mean, that just is huge.
Yeah, thank you very much. I'm very proud of the work we do. I'm proud of our team over in JFS and everything due with the community, and I'm extremely proud to be part of Delaware County. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Bob. Great job.
Thank you.
Item number 14, resolution number 25-554, in the matter of authorizing the county administrator to prepare a draft resolution and send all necessary notices related to a proposed community reinvestment area agreement and exemption to be considered pursuant to RC 3735.671.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Welcome.
Good morning, Commissioners. Dana McDaniel, Consultant to the Office of Economic Development. Regarding this resolution, Cologics intends to construct a data center or interconnection hub at 6787 Green Meadows Drive in Lewis Center. They anticipate investing at least $274 million in both real and personal property in this project. The project will employ 25 to 30 full-time employees with an annual payroll of about $2.5 to $3 million, and the project will participate in the Orange Township City Worthington Joint Economic Development District, or JED. The project sites located within an existing community reinvestment area, or CRA as we refer to it, in Orange Township, and staff is proposing for your consideration a 10-year 50% real property tax exemption. The project sites also happens to be within the Slate Ridge 2 Tax Increment Financing Area, or TIF area as we refer to it, which provides a 20-year 75% TIF exemption. This project will contribute to the TIF to help support infrastructure and the public infrastructure in the immediate area. It's estimated the project would generate about $80 million over 20 years into the TIF, inclusive of the 10-year 50% exemption, should you choose to grant it. The resolution before you would direct the administrator, as mentioned in the title, to notify both Olentangie Local Schools, School District, and the Delaware County Career Center prior to consideration of the CRA agreement. That's about a two-week notice, and then we would anticipate coming back if you approve this resolution with a CRA agreement for your consideration on August 14. We think that's going to get us just beyond the two-week notice period. Staff recommends, first, I want to thank Eric Hockstetler as well for all of his guidance and help in this project, learning the processes and so forth that you all prefer to use. So that's been extremely helpful. Thank you, Eric, for that. And staff recommends approval of the resolution, and I'd be happy to try to answer any questions you may have.
Questions, comments?
I didn't really have any questions. You know, you do a good job of keeping us up to date on important projects like this. I just like to emphasize, this is a big project, big, big for a lot of reasons. Provides, you know, not a huge amount of jobs, but it's some very good, solid jobs with significant payroll. And it'll fill in an area that's already getting filled in. They've already started construction. I've gone by there a number of times, and it's great to see. I mean, it's going to generate significant dollars for the schools in the area. And, you know, one of the key things we need to get done is that Home Road Bridge, and this will contribute significant dollars to that. So I want to thank you, Dana, for your leadership on this. Eric, I know your team, the economic development team worked hard on this, Tracy and others. This is a really good project for Delaware County, so thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to thank you too, Dana, and our team for working on this. It is a huge project, $80 million, and quality employer, and sign of things to come, many things to come. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Anything I say is going to be redundant, but I'll be just a little redundant. The quality of this project, because of the compensation these people will be paid, is great for the county. This is a project, a small data center, but it's a project that hopefully can lead to other things down the road. And the money this is going to create for the county for capital expenditures down the road is going to be very important to all of us as we make sure you can get around this county in a very meaningful way. And obviously, the bridge, the overpass on Lewis Center, up to Lewis Center from Home Road is one part of that. My guess is we'll probably be able to use it in other areas in the area, perhaps down this Orange Road even. So this is an exciting time for us, and hopefully we want to make projects in front of this.
If I could just add one other thing, I forgot to mention, Orange Township has been a huge partner in this venture, you know, creating the CRA, the TIF structure, you know, working with Cologics. So I want to give a shout out to Orange Township for their leadership on this as well.
Anything from our administrators?
I think we covered it all.
All right. Vote, please.
Vote on motion 25-554. Vote on motion two-five-dash-five-five-four. Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Thank you.
Next, Dana.
Resolution number two-five-dash-five-five-five, in the matter of approving a proposal and lease agreement with IMET Corporation for a pump station odor and grease treatment system for the Delaware County Regional Sewer District.
So moved. Second.
Discussion.
Morning, Commissioners. Eric McPeek, deputy director with the Regional Sewer District. This is a lease agreement with the option to purchase this technology that, for one, will take care of the grease mats in our lift stations, and that alone is significant for us for maintenance, and also, it's difficult to pump grease, and it's hard on the pumps, hard on the piping, things like that. Also, this could offset our use of bioxide that we use for odor control. We're really hoping that that's the case, and it looks like it is from the case studies we've seen. So we're gonna test this equipment. That's why it's a lease agreement. If it works like it should, we'll likely purchase. The ROI on this will be three to six years for the chemical alone, and as you know, our chemical costs have just continued to go up and up, and we see that happen in the future, too. So, the other thing is, we spend about thirty-one grand a year in bioxide at this location in particular to take care of the odor. So, if this works here, and we'll test it, make sure that that's the case. We understand what's happening. We'd love to employ this at some of the other pump stations to reduce our costs and increase our odor controllabilities.
Okay. Vote, please.
Vote on motion two-five-dash-five-five-five. Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Resolution number two-five-dash-five-five-six, in the matter of approving a vacation and a release of sanitary sewer easement for C-A-R-C-I-S number eight LLC in Delaware County, Ohio, official record twenty-one, twenty-one oh seven, pages two-seven-one to two-seventy.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
The developer, Epcun, in this case, has shifted the original linemen, which went through the Tartan Fields Golf Course, and moved it into the right-of-way. So we're simply vacating the original easement for the new one.
Okay. Vote, please.
Vote on motion two-five-dash-five-five-six. Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Resolution number two-five-dash-five-five-seven, in the matter of approving the drainage maintenance petition and ditch maintenance assessment for Dell Web Explore North Star.
So moved. Second.
Discussion.
Yes, Commissioners, good morning. Lee Bowden, our engineer's office. The Dell Web Explore North Star development is a multi-phase development site on three-hundred-and-forty-four-point-one-one acres located north off of Wilson Road, just east of North Galena Road in Kingston Township. This Dana, excuse me, this drainage and ditch maintenance petition was submitted by a hundred percent of the property owners, and we recommend your approval.
Vote, please.
Vote on motion two-five-dash-five-five-seven. Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Resolution number two-five-dash-five-five-eight, in the matter of approving the drainage maintenance petition and ditch maintenance assessment for Mercedes-Benz of Sunbury.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Yes, Commissioners, for your consideration, the Mercedes-Benz of Sunbury is a commercial site on twenty-three-point-four acres located south off of Route thirty-six, thirty-seven, and just east of South Wilson Road in Brookshire Township. The drainage easement, excuse me, the drainage and ditch maintenance petition was submitted by a hundred percent of the property owners, and again, we recommend your approval.
Vote, please.
Vote on motion two-five-dash-five-five-eight. Mr. Merrill?
So moved.
Mr.?
Yes.
Oh, Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
For item number nineteen, Director Riley has sent an email about there being a typo in section one of this resolution. It says Stites Road. I believe that is supposed to say Hyatt's Road.
Oh, correct.
Before we go ahead. Resolution number two-five-dash-five-five-nine, in the matter of approving the project grant agreement with the Ohio Public Works Commission for the Hyatt's Road and South Section Line Road Roundabout Project.
So moved. Second.
Discussion.
Yes, Commissioners, for your consideration, this resolution accepts an OPWC grant for about five-hundred-thousand dollars towards construction of a single-lane roundabout at the intersection of Hyatt's Road and South Section Line Road in Concord Township. The project is scheduled for construction next summer.
Vote, please.
Vote on motion two-five-dash-five-five-nine. Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Resolution number two-five-dash-five-six-zero, in the matter of approving plans, specifications, estimate, and setting the bid date for their project known as the Franklin Watershed Drainage Improvement Project.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Good morning, Commissioners. Brett Bacon, Soil and Water Conservation District. The Franklin Watershed Drainage Improvement Project is a one-hundred-and-twenty-seven-acre watershed in Genoa Township in the vicinity of Big Walnut and Big Walnut Road and South Old Three-C Highway. The project was approved by your board at the final hearing on December ninth, twenty-twenty-four. If successful bids are received, we would anticipate a September first start date for construction and a December nineteenth completion date of this year.
Okay. Vote, please.
Vote on motion two-five-dash-five-six-zero. Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Resolution number two-five-dash-five-six-one, in the matter of establishing the maintenance account, approving the maintenance easement, and certifying drainage maintenance assessment collection percentage for twenty-twenty-six for the Griffin number three-nine-one Drainage Improvement Project.
So moved. Second.
Discussion.
The Griffith Project is located in Berlin Township, would be in the vicinity of Peach Blow Road and North Road. Construction was completed this spring. Very happy with how the project has turned out. We have a final construction cost of one-hundred-and-sixty-eight-thousand-five-fifty-three-sixty, and then administration inspection and drainage maintenance holdback brings it up to the final hearing estimate of two-hundred-and-twenty-six-thousand-one-hundred-two dollars ninety-one cents, and we'd recommend your approval.
Okay. Vote, please.
Vote on motion two-five-dash-five-six-one. Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Resolution number two-five-dash-five-six-two, in the matter of approving plans, specifications, estimate, and setting the bid date for the project known as the Ryboff number six-two-zero Watershed Drainage Improvement Project.
So moved. Second.
Discussion.
Again, the Ryboff Project is located in Kingston Township. This is a three-hundred-and-fifty-seven-acre watershed between Todd Street Road and Kilborn Road. The project was approved at the final hearing held April eleventh, twenty-twenty-two, and has been advertised in the past and has not received a successful bid yet. If successful bids are received, we would anticipate an October first start date with a completion date of May thirty-first of twenty-twenty-six.
Vote, please.
Vote on motion two-five-dash-five-six-two. Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Resolution number two-five-dash-five-six-three, in the matter of approving a right-of-way work permit summary sheet.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Good morning, Commissioners. Lee Bowden, our again, from the engineer's office. For your consideration, this is for standard utility right-of-way permits, and we would recommend your approval.
Vote, please.
Vote on motion two-five-dash-five-six-three. Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Resolution number two-five-dash-five-six-four, in the matter of accepting the roads, approving recommended speed limits, establishing stop conditions, and releasing security for Beachwood Estates.
So moved. Second.
Discussion.
Yes, Commissioners, for your consideration, the Beachwood Estates is a fourteen-buildable lot site on forty-nine-point-seven-one acres located south off of State Route five-twenty-one and just west of North Three Bs and K Road in Brown Township. This resolution returns the maintenance surety, accepts the roadways into the county public roadway system, sets the speed limit at twenty-five miles per hour, and establishes one stop sign installation at the intersection of Saltwell Run Road and State Route five-twenty-one. This area has been inspected by all required and necessary agencies, and we recommend your approval.
Vote, please.
Vote on motion two-five-dash-five-six-four. Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioners, and thank you, Clerk, for pointing out that error in the resolution.
Thanks. It is time that we may start the hearing, if you so choose.
I'm going to move that we go into executive session first.
Okay, all right. That would be number twenty-eight, resolution number two-five-dash-five-six-five, in the matter of adjourning into executive session for consideration of appointment, compensation of a public employer or public official for pending or imminent litigation and for collective bargaining.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Vote.
Vote on motion two-five-dash-five-six-five. Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Mr. Benton?
Aye.
We are now reassessed into executive session.